Too much junk here.
Good morning, sir.
Morning, how are you?
Good.
Everybody ready?
Go over here.
Good morning. We will call the April seventeenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners to order. At this point, it's my pleasure to invite Pastor Shelley Satrian of our Savior Lutheran Church to the podium. She will provide, lead us in the invocation. That'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dylan Rangel, the county attorney. And first, we will start off with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders. Would everybody please rise?
Gracious God, your mercies fall afresh and renew us each day. We thank you for the fresh breeze and the crisp air this morning that remind us of that. We thank you for this beautiful place we get to live here in Indian River County, and we thank you for all who care for it. We give you thanks for all who are in this room this morning, who are tasked with decision-making and guiding our county. We thank you for all who are in this room, who serve and protect and respond to those in need and to crisis and emergency. Lord, protect and strengthen them. We pray for all who are out in the streets doing this right now. We pray for all who care and maintain our county, making it a place we are proud to live in. Lord, keep our eyes and our hearts open and focused on working for the common good of all. We pray this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Move approval.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fletcher, seconded by Commissioner Adams. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries four zero. Commissioner Slary is attending to his duties as a member of the Constitutional Revision Commission. So he is up in Tallahassee voting on the proposed constitutional amendment. So we wish him luck in his duties up there today. Takes us to proclamations and presentations. And first, we have a presentation of a proclamation honoring John William King on his retirement from Indian River County Board of County Commissioners, Department of Emergency Services. Chief King, good morning and welcome.
Good morning.
I see you have your lovely wife with you there. And we'll go ahead and, I hope I can lift this thing and present it to you. And then we would love to hear a couple of words from you about your future plans. So, and this is a proclamation, folks. This is not a, this is the real deal here. It is a proclamation honoring John William King upon the occasion of his retirement from Indian River County Department of Emergency Services. Whereas, John William King, a lifelong resident of Indian River County, began his distinguished career in the fire service as a local volunteer firefighter. And upon being hired by Fire Rescue in nineteen seventy-six, embarked upon a forty-two-year career dedicated to the citizens of his hometown. And whereas, with diligence and honor, over the next four decades, he worked his way through the ranks. Firefighter, engineer, lieutenant, training officer, deputy director of emergency services, county fire chief, and finally, from two thousand and one until today, the dual leadership role as director of emergency services and chief of fire rescue. And whereas, John King was a principal author of the consolidation of the fire division and emergency medical services division into a countywide fire rescue department. Wherein, as department director, he performed highly responsible administrative and management work in directing, coordinating, planning, and organizing a total emergency services program, including fire suppression and prevention, emergency medical services, radiological preparedness, emergency management, communications nine-one-one coordinator, and animal control on a countywide basis. And whereas, almost after a half a century of service, exceptional loyalty, extreme dedication, and ever the gentleman, John William King will be retiring on April thirty, two thousand and eighteen. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners that the board thanks Chief King for his unwavering service, commitment, and dedication to the people of our community, and for choosing to spend a lifetime contributing to the history of our county and leaving behind examples of integrity, determination, commitment, brotherhood, and pride. Be it further proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners and staff that they extend their sincerest wishes for success in all your future endeavors. Adopted seventeenth day of April, two thousand and eighteen, signed by myself as chairman of the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County. John, just thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Jason Dillon, that was very kind. People in the audience, that was very kind too. Thank you for, thank you for all that. I've always taken the, seriously, the statutory duties of emergency services. That's the protection of life and property. That's the protection of our local environment. And also the responsibility to help this community recover economically after a local disaster. And to this end, for more than four decades, I have spent my life working with the best people that I know. Not many people can say that. Excuse me, human moment there. Working with these people throughout the years, the men and women that work in fire rescue, law enforcement, folks that work in, your dedicated staff in emergency management, nine-one-one, animal control, and the others. They all share that vision of protecting this community. And I think that the board recognizes their dedication. And I want them to know that I care about that too. During my career, I've had the opportunity to have leadership roles, both in professional associations and also in a public safety statewide task force, forces. And when you take those assignments, often you get these opportunities to take new jobs. There's always a place that's a bigger community, there's a little bit of higher pay. And I remember something, somebody told me one time about job jumping, was he said that people often think the grass is greener on the other side of the hill. But when you get there, it's usually knee-deep and over a set we think that's why the last guy left. So ultimately, I always wanted to work here. I always thought this was a great place to be in a community I wanted to serve in. I've had great mentors over the years, many friends. I've enjoyed many personal accomplishments. And most of you know that I've won some awards throughout the state because, not because I deserve them, but because my coworkers put me up for awards and I ultimately won. And so, I've often said I stole my best ideas from my best friends, so I've been very successful on their backs. And so I appreciate that as well. But there's a couple of things that you probably don't know about me. That's very minor to you, but very personal to me. In all these years, I've never been late for work one time. Not many people can say that. In fact, some of my staff can't say that. So, if I'm here this morning, I'm surrounded by coworkers from emergency services. I have some retirees that came back to spend the day with me, both from fire rescue and even from the sheriff's department. They showed up today with her, to enjoy this day with me and help me celebrate the day. And so, I want to thank them for being here. There's other county departments here, there's state agencies that are represented here, and thank you for coming out this morning. And I also want to thank the commission for selecting my replacement. You've appointed somebody to replace me. Somebody I think is very qualified, somebody's very experienced. And I think it's going to be a smooth transition for emergency services. And so as we enter into hurricane season, I think that you're in good shape and you got good leadership coming in to keep the organization going like it is. And so, I cannot end my remarks today without recognizing my best friend and bride for thirty years, my wife Angela. She's a person of strong faith, good moral compass, and ever reminds me that I'm just simply a work in progress. So after thirty years of every hurricane season, securing the windows, dragging out the generator, and putting the orchids in the garage, I'll be home this hurricane season with her. So thank you.
John, I just celebrated my twenty-ninth anniversary. My wife says the same thing. I'm still a work in progress. I don't know. Y'all learn that at wife school or something? Well, you know, I guess it's good news, bad news. But I've had the, I don't really say the pleasure, but I've had the experience of benefiting from some of our rescue folks. And, you know, obviously it was a, you know, just professional, competent, save-my-life kind of experience. So, I know all that trickles back up to leadership and the role, John, you provided. And also the fact that we went through the recession and we had to cut budgets and having to make do with less dollars and pulling the fire division through that and still, you know, responding to the needs of the public, I think speaks volumes about the work you were doing. And then just the people here today to recognize and honor your commitment and your service, I think says a lot too. So, John, you will be missed. Please don't be a stranger. I'm sure you'll be around some and popping up here and there, so we can look forward to seeing you around. But again, thank you for your service, your dedication. And thank you for sharing John with us for forty-two years. So, thank you. Commissioner Fletcher, did you have anything you'd like to add?
Chief, thank you for your service to the greatest county in the state of Florida and making it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes, thank you. And I really do hope that you enjoy your time off. I know you've worked very hard over the years. And, you know, my mom always really appreciated what you brought to the table and working with you, and I have as well. I'm just sorry I didn't get to spend as much time as she did. So congratulations and good luck.
Well, thank you very much. I've known her since she was in middle school. I'm very proud of you too. Thank you.
Commissioners, Mark?
Yes, John, will we go back? I think it was nineteen eighty or eighty-one, the first time we shared a volunteer shift together. At least, I think you were, might have been paid by then. I was one of the lackeys that was hanging around. I think Henry Losi was driving the truck and we were trying to hang on to the back on occasion. But, but we go back a long ways. And what I'll surely miss, and I, Tad may get tired of, but those, those kind of lengthy discussions we have on a variety of topics for the district of how do we continue to make things better. I still need somebody that I can call and say, hey, there's a headlight out on a med unit going somewhere. So I need a text number, somebody I can send those little alerts to. But you're always very, we're always very quick to get back. And I know sometimes I'd call and, I know if you don't answer, it's because you're busy. Or maybe you were avoiding the call, I'm not sure.
I'll never tell.
I mean, it was only, it was eleven o'clock at night. I don't, I don't know, it might have been busy. But, but thank you for all the time that you always carved out in your schedule for me. I really appreciate that. And, and we'll look forward to working with your, with Tad going forward. But you'll be surely missed. And I don't think you're changing your number though, right?
I'm not changing my number.
Okay, good.
I've had it for too many years.
Call blocked, no. Well, great, well, thank you and enjoy your, so any big plans, adventures?
My wife and I are planned for a year and a half, take a vacation to Yellowstone. So we're hoping that can be pulled together here in the next couple of weeks. And then it's, I think she deserves a little me-time. So, yard projects, home projects, and things to do. And so, then I'll get, then I'll get busy again. So, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Dylan?
John, when I, when I was looking, hearing, listening to the presentation this morning, the proclamation, there were kind of two sentences that were statements that really jumped out at me. One was that ever the gentleman, and the other one was your unwavering service. And I thought those two things really hit home to me in terms of the years that we've got to work together and just what an honor and a pleasure it was to work with you. And I know your commitment to the department, to this county, to this community. And it just made my life so much easier knowing you were right there, you know, during the hurricanes or during whatever experience. And just always appreciated getting the chance to work with you. You are, you are a great, you are a great soul for this community.
Thank you, Dylan.
And John, I would guess after forty-two years, you served with three county administrators, four?
At least four.
At least four.
Perhaps five.
Well, here's your current one, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to say thank you, John. Thank you to Angela. I know Angela was the hurricane widow that we've referred to. And John was always there, dependable. And I want to pull something from the, from the proclamation as well. A forty-two-year career dedicated to the citizens of his hometown. And that to me is, is, sums up John's career. He was in ser, we talk about public service here, but it's public service. One thing that I always saw in John, learned from John, and got from John was that, that you do the right thing for the community in the long run. And that's what I saw from John throughout his whole career. Also, just like to thank him for his calm competence during all kinds of emergencies and hurricanes, even when you had a new county administrator who's only been on, on the job for three months and you get a hurricane in there. Great calming influence and just knew his stuff, just tremendous professional, knew his business well, executed it well professionally, competently, and for the best interest of the citizens of Indian River County. So, just thank you for, for being such a good professional and a good person doing the right thing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
John, you and Angela, come on up here, we'll get a picture with you. Hey, you got those green t-tons when you go out there too. That's beautiful part.
Thank you.
John, you guys are going to climb Devil's Tower, right?
I can do it. I'll try. I got it. It is a big plaque.
It is a big plaque. I'm telling you, you need a couple of people to help you carry that.
Okay, on three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John. Thank you, brother. Thank you for letting us work. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it, buddy. Thank you.
Next, we'll have a presentation of a proclamation designating the month of April as Volunteer Appreciation Month. Commissioner Susan Adams will be presenting this. We have Sheriff Duralor is here. Captain Ken Simone is here. And Sheriff, any other volunteers that want to come up? Some of you folks want to come up to the other podium here? Commissioner Adams?
Thank you, thank you. This is awesome. It's great to see all the volunteers here. And it is my great pleasure to read this proclamation designating the month of April, two thousand and eighteen, as Volunteer Appreciation Month. Whereas, volunteerism strengthens communities, improves social problems, and enhances the overall quality of life for all citizens, including children, seniors, those who are disabled, impoverished, imprisoned, homeless, physically or mentally ill, or otherwise in need of assistance. And whereas, volunteering changes the lives of volunteers in a positive way by increasing self-confidence, self-esteem, and physical well-being, offering the chance to make new friends and providing opportunities to learn new skills and abilities. And whereas, volunteering is proven to have a positive influence on businesses that are socially responsible by increasing employee morale, loyalty, and teamwork, and building goodwill toward the company. And whereas, nonprofits, charities, community and faith-based groups, schools, volunteer centers, and national service programs in Indian River County have joined together with state and local governments in celebration and praise of volunteers who have given tirelessly and selflessly to the service of others. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners in Indian River County, Florida, that the month of April, two thousand and eighteen, be designated as Volunteer Appreciation Month in Indian River County. And the board encourages all citizens to promote the spirit of volunteerism, to observe the appropriate activities, programs, and ceremonies supporting volunteerism, and to participate and engage others in volunteer activities now and for as long as they are able. Adopted the seventeenth day of April, two thousand and eighteen, and signed by all five county commissioners. Sheriff, welcome.
Welcome, and thank you, commissioners, for what a great day it is on the heels of Chief King's accomplishments and the accomplishments of the Indian River County Sheriff's Office. With us today, you obviously have a variety of folks. So whether you need traffic directed, lock your keys in your car, get stranded in your vessel on our waterways, or unfortunately have an untimely death of a loved one, we have a cadre of volunteers here that we're very proud. Some two hundred volunteers at Indian River County Sheriff's Office, led by Major Eric Flowers, as well as Captain Ken Simone. But most importantly, the coordinator, Ms. Jera Torres. I get her name mixed up every now and then.
Good morning. Yeah, I change it up every once in a while. I just want to say, my group, we have several volunteers in the corrections group as well. My group consists of eighty-three. We've got marine patrol, road patrol, administration, victim advocates, we care volunteers. This group in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, saved the county in excess of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I think that they are very invaluable. And I feel very blessed that I have the best job in the sheriff's office. So, thank you so much for honoring them today. Thank you.
Commissioner Adams, this actually makes a good picture here. You all are grouped real nice. So you want to go down there and just present the proclamation to them? Scott, can you come up here? And we need a couple of the shorter people to move to the front. Some of you tall guys get in the back.
You can't hide.
Yeah, here we go.
We want everybody to see all the volunteers. You guys do a great job. Thank you.
Oh, Jer, you have to be in the picture. I know your time.
Yeah, it is a good shot. That's a nice group there, yeah. Go ahead, Commissioner Adams.
Did I say cheese?
Hang on, there we go. There we go.
Okay, on three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Good?
Perfect. You got it? Great, all right. That looked good, yeah.
Sheriff? We always tend to point out the amount of funds that the volunteers save, save the taxpayers. But I have to say, looking at this crowd and reflecting back at the countless times at two o'clock in the morning when we had an incident, the volunteers were there. When we had an incident on the water, the volunteers were there. When we've had an unfortunate loss, there they are, the advocates are there. And, and I have to say that we, we might want to put a dollar amount on what they do, but I'd rather look at it as priceless. Allowing law enforcement the opportunity to be able to perform the function that the citizens deserve and the sacrifices that you all make at two o'clock in the morning when you say, I got called in. And it's about the FEC arms, or it's about a crash, or it's about an incident, or it's a major traffic control incident, or any other emergency. You treat it as the emergency and the urgency that it truly deserves. And I believe that the citizens are far greater by you serving in this capacity. There's a lot of other volunteer services out there. And looking at the crowd, there's a few that actually serve in other capacities, in other elements. They serve in many, many arenas. But I just want to say thank you for serving the sheriff's office because you do have a tremendous impact. Besides, once in a while, you get to ride around in a cool car too.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
What a crowd.
That picture looked good. It was a lot easier to turn and get them all up here, right? The, next is a presentation of a proclamation designating April twenty-ninth through May fifth, two thousand and eighteen, as Small Business Week in Indian River County. I will be presenting this. And we have Helene Castle-Tine from the chamber, Andy Bindor from National Bank of Commerce, Jim Funk from Piper Aircraft, Brian Bauer from Career Source, and anyone else?
Oh, Kim Brady from Fully Per-
Oh, I'm sorry, Kim.
Kim Brady.
So I'll go ahead and present this, and then Helene or someone can give us a few words. Okay. This is a proclamation designating April twenty-ninth through May fifth, two thousand and eighteen, as Small Business Week in Indian River County. Whereas, America's progress has been driven by pioneers who think big, take extreme risks, and work incredibly hard. And whereas, from the storefront shops that anchor our downtowns to the high-tech startups that keep America on the cutting edge, small businesses are the backbone of our economy. And whereas, small business owners and entrepreneurs have energy and a passion for what they do. And whereas, when we support and patronize local small businesses, local jobs are created for our residents and local communities preserve their unique culture. And whereas, small businesses help sustain our quality of life by diversifying and strengthening our tax base in Indian River County. And whereas, every year since nineteen sixty-three, the U.S. Small Business Administration takes the opportunity to highlight the impact of outstanding entrepreneurs and small business owners through the National Small Business Week. And whereas, Indian River County supports and joins in this national effort to help America's small business owners do what they do best. Grow their business, create twenty-first century jobs, and ensure that our communities continue on a robust path well into the future. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the week of April twenty-ninth through May fifth, two thousand and eighteen, be designated as Small Business Week in Indian River County. Adopted the seventeenth day of April, two thousand and eighteen, signed and endorsed by all five county commissioners. Helene?
Thank you. Good morning. For the record, Helene Castle-Tine, Economic Development Director with the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce. And thank you, commissioners, for joining us to recognize the positive impact that small businesses have on our community. We are joining hundreds of communities and organizations throughout the country in doing this. And small business is indeed the backbone of our local economy as well as our nation. In Indian River County, we have over nine thousand businesses registered, and that includes all the municipalities as well. And I would say the vast majority are considered small businesses. And they employ thousands of our local residents. In Florida, there's over two million businesses that are considered small, less than a hundred employees. And that's almost about ninety-nine percent- employees, and that's almost about ninety-nine percent of all Florida businesses. Three million of the state's ten million workers are employed by small businesses. At the national level, the definition of small business kind of changes depending upon the industry. For example, in the aircraft manufacturing industry, a company with less than fifteen hundred employees is considered small. As you mentioned, we do have representatives of our business community here, and they are all chamber members as well, and I think having Volunteer Month in April kind of works well with us also, because we couldn't do what we do at the chamber without our volunteers, and that's, that is for sure. So lastly, I would like to do a little plug, if I may. Next Thursday on April 26th, we have scheduled a Small Business Resources Workshop at our chamber, so it'll be in our boardroom. It is free. It's from 9:30 to 11:30, and if you are thinking about starting a small business, or you have a business and you want to grow that business, this might be a good opportunity for you to learn about all the different resources we have here in our local area that can help you. We have representatives from the Small Business Development Center at IRSC, from Treasure Coast Score, from Career Source Research Coast, and the Director for the Florida Virtual Entrepreneur Center will also be there. So it is free, but we do need reservations. You can call our chamber office at (567) 3491 to make a reservation, and that again is next Thursday, April 26th, from 9:30 to 11:30. So with that, thank you very much, commissioners, really appreciate your support.
Thank you to all you, and for the great work you do in our community. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Now, the way you guys are growing, you're not going to be small. Before we go to the next presentation, Brian, if you want to just give a quick plug for a upcoming training event?
Yes, thank you, commissioners, good morning. Very proud to say that with some hard work, dedication, as well as a little bit of money from our State Board, Career Source Florida, Career Source Research Coast was able to obtain a grant, bear with me here a second, for a specific project, and this project was to help energize community sectors in our local workforce area, which is the three counties, Indian River, St. Lucie, and Martin County. And this sector focused that this particular grant was for manufacturing, advanced manufacturing. This grant, my team, Marcelo De Santos and Susan Haggard, put together a, after long hours of dedication and time, put together a Registered Apprenticeship Standards Curriculum in collaboration with Indian River State College and the Treasure Coast Manufacturing Association, who is the actual sponsor of this apprenticeship. We have, we're proud to say that as of last Monday, a week ago Monday, these standards have been approved by the State of Florida Department of Education. This is the first Career Source Board that has had this completed. Very, very excited to have this, and basically, the flyer that you have in your packet today is the, is the Industrial Manufacturing Technician. These are the standards that we're going to be pushing towards our manufacturers in our local workforce area. It's a three-thousand-hour course, both of employment as well as online, not online, actually classroom training within the college, their particular program, the CCTI, and the CPT program that's offered through MSSC. So we are very excited to start building that talent pipeline that our manufacturers and our employers in our communities are so, so deserving, and they are, they are in such need of. So with this, our next step, now that the standards have been completed, we're tasked and charged with finding thirty individuals to put into this program. We also have another grant on the side of that as a pre-apprenticeship program, that we're also supposed to put another thirty. So by the end of another eighteen months, we should have sixty individuals that have gone either through the apprenticeship and/or the registered apprenticeship program. We will be out of this program. The intent is that the Treasure Coast Manufacturing Association will take the seed, once the seed money is out, then they will be able to handle the funding as well, so we're looking forward to that. And again, I want to say thank you to you all, because you are a critical and crucial part of what we try to accomplish, so thank you very much, and it's been a pleasure to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And just for the folks listening at home or computer access, what the flyer he referred to is under Item 7A in our agenda packet. Item 7A is the flyer with the information on this apprentice program, so, thank you very much, Brian.
And for the record, too, I forgot. Brian Bauer, President and CEO for Career Source Research Coast, sorry about that.
No worries. Thank you. Our last proclamation is honoring the best relaxation and romance programs' continued services to active-duty couples. This will be presented by Commissioner Zork, and we have Cindy Giese here. Is that, did I say that right?
Adam.
And Adam Giese.
And Adam, Cindy and Adam, great. Well, welcome, Commissioner Zork.
Yes, thank you. Again, this is proclamation honoring the Rest, Relaxation, and Romance Programs' continued service to active-duty couples. Whereas, the Rest, Relaxation, and Romance Program was founded by Cindy and Adam Giese to provide active-duty couples returning from deployment a chance to reconnect with their spouses with an all-expense-paid mini-vacation. And whereas, the Rest, Relaxation, and Romance Program works with local businesses and donors to provide three-night resort stay, meals, couples massage, beauty treatments, fishing trips, and other sundries to active-duty couples. And whereas, on April 27th, 2018, Joshua and Jordan Agiri of the Naval Air Station in Jacksonville will be the fiftieth couple to enjoy the opportunities offered through the Rest, Relaxation, and Romance Program. And whereas, Indian River County is committed to support our military and believes that it offers an ideal place for rest, relaxation, and romance. Maybe I should also put in there, and when they're no longer in the service, relocation to the area. We'll add that to it. Whereas, through a partnership with Greater Jacksonville Area USO and the generous support of business owners, individuals, and the community, the Rest, Relaxation, and Romance Program continues to honor active-duty military couples. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that the Board recognizes the efforts of Cindy and Adam Giese, as well as their sponsors, for their continued endeavors to provide rest, relaxation, and romance to active military couples, adopted the seventeenth day of April 2018. Good morning, thank you.
Good morning, thank you. It's quite an honor to be here before you, and it's an honor to, to follow a committed civil servant, wonderful volunteers, and the wonderful Chamber of Commerce. Adam and I started this about ten years ago. I was on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce in Lauderdale by the Sea, which is in Broward County, before I escaped up here, and I wanted, I wanted our people returning from combat to not face the trials and tribulations the Vietnam vets did. So I said, "I'd like to do this," and they said, "Sure, if you'll do all the work." So I guess we'll be doing this till we drop, which hopefully is later rather than sooner. Special thanks go to Commissioner Solari and his wonderful wife Jackie. They donate to the USO so that all the couples can be reimbursed for their tips, so it's no out-of-pocket for them. And to Commissioner Zork, who arranged for Captain Paul from Just Bumminet Fishing to provide fishing trips for the couples. It's always whether they want to go fishing or couples massages, big decision. I also wanted to thank, many of you know, Arnie Schwarzenberg and his wife Lily, our ninety-six-year-old, ninety-six-year-young Pearl Harbor survivor. He has a chance to have breakfast with all these young couples, and you've just never seen anything like it. It's absolutely hilarious, and when he found out there's a Starbucks onboard the Carl Vinson, I said, "Arnie, you cannot re-up." Do that. But it's, it's quite, quite a bromance that develops between these, these Navy folks. And again, thank you to the USO in Greater Jacksonville, the only one in Florida, by the way, and they, I can't pick the couples, so don't ask me, but the Greater Jacksonville USO works with commands across the state and up to Kings Bay, Georgia, to find the couples. All couples leave with a positive opinion of Indian River County, and a number have said they'd like to retire here, so we're, we're working towards that. We've, more than fifty businesses in the Sebastian area and a few in Vero Beach have done this, and for the chamber folks who are still here, we can always use gift certificates for meals. That's one thing. We have flowers for every couple, adult beverages, beauty treatments, the massages, personalized t-shirts, tote bags, goodie bags, a lot of things, but we're always reaching to get some more gift certificates for, for restaurants. And I guess that's, for a change, all I have to say, but just thank you for your support of the program. It's an honor. It's all branches of service. It's young, it's old, it's from a guy peeling potatoes on a ship to a lieutenant who worked with General Petraeus at CENTCOM. It's just been a joy to, to meet all these heroes, so thank you very much for your support.
Thank you for all the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Adam. Thank you.
You guys scoot down this way just a little. Scoot to your right just a little.
Come on down a little bit into the middle there.
There we go.
On three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Did that?
Alright, that looks pretty fancy. Do it once? Yeah.
The skills, the skills you picked up.
There are no minutes for approval, so that moves us to informational items. Commissioners, anybody wish to bring up anything on information for discussion?
Yes, under 7C. I see we have the letter going out to the Mayor of Sebastian, and as this continues to move forward, I just, at some point, it, it may be beneficial for all the parties, excuse me, and us to, whether it's a workshop or a discussion, so I just say that the door is open on, on how we can work to continue to, to resolve this problem.
And certainly, when I worked with Dylan on this letter, that was our intent, to convey that we would like to work this out in an amicable fashion, and so we'll await for the city's response and go from there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zork. Commissioners, anybody else? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and move to consent agenda. Is there any commissioner that wishes to pull an item from consent for additional discussion? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to pull a consent agenda item for additional I will just point out that we have two items here, repairing some, some docks from the hurricane damage, and also the South Ozlo Conservation Area boardwalk construction. I see Beth Powell's here, so nice to see some of those projects coming forward, so thank you for moving those forward. So, nothing to pull? Commissioner?
Move of approval.
Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Flesher, second by Commissioner Zork. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four zero. We move to constitutional officers. The first is Indian River County Sheriff Darrell Lor with the Florida Contraband Forfeiture Act in request for ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars from Law Enforcement Trust Fund to be used to purchase equipment and to support programs and agencies. Sheriff Lor?
Miss Chairman, move of approval.
Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Flesher, second by Commissioner Zork. Sheriff, would you like any words, please? On behalf of the Sheriff's Office, thank you. This goes to a variety of nonprofits, but as important, it helps County Administrator Brown and Finance Director Mike in lessening our upcoming budget proposal, so thank you. And I know you feel better about that, Mr. Brown.
That makes me very happy.
You're welcome. Thank you, Commissioner. Alright, we do have a motion. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four zero. Thank you, Sheriff. Next, we welcome our Supervisor Elections, Leslie Swan, Regarding Network Security Monitoring Services, Albert Server Reimbursement Grant. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners, how are you? I'm Leslie Swan, Supervisor of Elections, and I have here with me Gary Gordon, our Information Technology Manager, which you all know, and I'm here today because the Florida Legislature has budgeted funds to protect against attacks on the elections infrastructure. Included in the State of Florida's budget this year, which goes into effect on July 1st, are funds for a reimbursement grant to all Florida counties, and these funds are to be used to purchase what's called the Albert Server and Monitoring System, and this system provides security alerts, helping organizations identify malicious activity. And we all know that cybersecurity is on the forefront of all the minds of elections officials, and this monitoring will take place twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So the state is going to pay a hundred percent of the cost to purchase this server, which is a little under nine thousand dollars. There's an initiation fee to be part of the organization to do the monitoring of nine hundred, and the state's also going to pay for the first year of monitoring, which is six hundred and twenty dollars a month. So the reimbursement grant should be short, shy of just about seventeen thousand dollars. So it's our intention to go ahead right now and purchase and install the system, so we have it all up and running prior to the primary election in August, and the reimbursement funds will be available beginning July 1st, and the Secretary of State, Denster, said that we should be reimbursed within about thirty days. We have six counties that are already online, nine are pending, and we would be ten, so I'm not asking for the money, I'm just asking that when we get reimbursed by the state to roll it back into our 2017-18 budget. And if you have any questions about the technical aspects, Gary's here.
Commissioners, any?
Miss-
Commissioner Flesher?
Yes, Madam Supervisor, I have to say that with your staff and you at the helm, I can't imagine there being a threat that can penetrate your system. It, it's a distinct pleasure to say, move of approval.
Second?
Thank you.
We have a motion from Commissioner Flesher, second by Commissioner Zork, and this request is just to take the reimbursement funds and roll them back into the current budget. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to speak on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four zero. And Leslie, while you're here, I know I've, I've heard you in other meetings express some concerns about the upcoming November election and the length of the ballot, and that you're recommending folks to maybe sign up for a vote by mail, so you want to go ahead and just walk through that real quick while we have the audience here?
Yes, certainly. The Constitutional Revision Committee, which meets once every twenty years, is finishing up their work, and they have quite a few constitutional amendments that are proposed for the November ballot. There's also five other constitutional amendments that have been put on by the legislature and citizens' initiative petitions, so we are counting on a lengthy ballot. It could be three cards, it will definitely be two cards, and if you remember back to 2012, when we had a lot of constitutional amendments, there were very long lines in some counties, so we want to avoid any of that here in Indian River County, so I'm recommending that if you'd like to vote by mail, please just pick up the phone and call our office or go on our website at voteindianriver.com, and you can vote in the comfort of your home, and so you'll have time to review all of these constitutional amendments, because they're a big deal, and changing the Constitution is a big deal, so you want to make sure you're fully informed before you cast your ballot, so I encourage you to vote by mail if possible.
And Leslie, that will be in the November general election.
Yes.
But they can go ahead and sign up now for vote by mail?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we've already sent out postcards to anyone who's fallen off the list, because you only stay on the list for two general elections, then you have to re-opt to renew your request for ballots, so it's really simple. Just pick up the phone and call us.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And our third constitutional officer this morning, Indian River County Clerk of the Circuit Court and Comptroller, Jeffrey R. Smith, and he will be presenting his comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, and even more, the popular annual financial report. Good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, commissioners, thank you, Chairman. For the record, I'm a work in progress, too. The audit was completed on March 14th of 2018. We had a clean opinion. There was no findings or written comments by the auditors, and it includes all the government, governmental and enterprise- And it includes all the governmental and enterprise fund departments, and as well as all the constitutional officers. As you'll see there, the CAFER is set up on a county line level basis, and then each, under each, under that, there's financial statements for each entity, including the Board of County Commissioners and the five constitutional officers. The next slide there shows you the county's net position. I just wanted to make a few comments here. Contributing to the increase in the current and other assets is the recording of revenues and receivables for anticipated insurance and FEMA reimbursements on hurricanes. We do have a breakdown on the Hurricane Matthew. The FEMA reimbursement will be one point nine million, and the insurance reimbursement will be five point six million. On Hurricane Irma, the FEMA reimbursement will be two million. We do not know yet what the insurance reimbursement will be on Hurricane Irma, that was not booked. But that's all included in the upper level on the county net position. The decrease in long-term liabilities is due to the scheduled payments on our principal debt. And the biggest part of the increase in other liabilities, deferred inflows and deferred outflows, was the pension liability. Last year, the liability was a hundred and eleven million, now it's jumped up to a hundred and twenty-eight million. That is a smaller increase than it was in two thousand sixteen, that's a fifteen percent increase. And that's due to the actuary, the FRS actuary calculating those numbers and sending them to us. And then we book them based on the departments by department. The Board's share of that increase was sixty-nine, almost seventy million dollars. The rest of them belonged to, the rest of it belonged to the Constitutional's leading. The way was the sheriff with thirty-seven percent of that. The FRS changed, the, part of the components of that increase is a change, a decrease in their expected rate of return from seven point six percent down to seven point one percent, and a change in their mortality tables that encompassed the, that the actuary took into effect to calculate those net liability. Now that's, that's really just a book number. That hundred and twenty-eight million theoretically means that if every employee and retiree came into the FRS at one point and wanted the, demanded their pension benefits, that's what they would be. Well, that's not going to happen, so the hundred and twenty-eight million, a hundred and twenty-eight million is really just a book number. It's not an actual amount that we're going to have to pay in the next twelve months or so. The next slide is net position components. And the biggest part of our net position is investment in capital assets. And you'll see an increase there based on completion of some of the projects that we had going on this past year and reduction in debt because of debt payments. There was a slight increase in net position due to capital projects budgeted in future years. That's the restricted part of net position. And also revenues from state and federal grants and insurance proceeds that were booked. There's a slight decrease in the unrestricted net position, and that's due to the pension liability increase. The next slide is county change in net position. A few comments here, there was an increase of twelve, almost thirteen million in government-type revenues from two thousand sixteen, mainly due to property tax increases of five point five million. And also increases in operating grants and contributions of seven point five million, five point, seven point five million, mainly due to insurance and FEMA reimbursements. Government-type, now those FEMA reimbursements, the expenses were in prior years, so you won't see an increase in expenses this year, because those expenses were already incurred for Matthew, and the reimbursements come in after the fact. So that's why revenues are such higher than the expenses. The expenses did increase, however, by four point four percent, mainly due to the pension increase, the pension liability. Business-type revenues increased about, there was charges for services that increased by one point eight percent, or one point eight million, excuse me. Obviously, growth in the county and development is increasing, so that affects Building Department, it affects utilities, it affects the golf course and the shooting range. So that's the explanation for that. Operating grants and contributions increased approximately one point five million. And capital grants and contributions were increased by one point one million, mainly due to developer contributions, and that's related to utility projects for new subdivisions and commercial entities. Business-type expenses increased five point nine million, or eleven percent from two thousand sixteen. And mainly that, the biggest part of that, solid waste obviously for the cleanup for hurricanes. An increase of three point two million in water and sewer expenses related to R and R projects and operating costs. And almost a million dollars in the increase in the Building Department for staffing reasons due to the increase in development. Next slide is a review of the revenues, and this is good. County's largest source of revenue obviously is property taxes. That's forty-seven percent, followed by, this year, operating grants and contributions of seventeen percent, and then sales taxes of thirteen percent. Last year, that was reversed. Sales taxes is usually the second-leading revenue source, but because of the hurricane reimbursement, that superseded sales taxes and jumped up to number two. And charges for services is thirteen percent. The review of expenses, majority of the county's expenses obviously are for public safety, that's the sheriff and for EMS, followed by transportation at seventeen percent, general government fifteen percent, and culture and recreation nine percent. Key factor here is that there's a lot of, you know, a lot of sentiment there to limit government. And you can see here that the general government expenses are only fifteen percent of the total expenses, so that's a good thing. The next slide, we talk about the general fund in particular. And the general fund had a reduction in fund balance of about one million. That's due to transit-related expenses that are to be reimbursed, but they, the reimbursement didn't come in in the forty-five days that we have to book the receivable. So had that came in, we would have been a positive one point three million in the general fund, fund balance. That reimbursement will be coming in in two thousand eighteen. I always like this slide, because it shows the reduction in debt. There's four debt issues, two bonds, two notes, remaining at nine thirty seventeen for a total of forty-three point nine million. All the outstanding debt will be paid off in the next six years, with the exception of the spring training bonds, which gets paid off in thirteen years. Item of note, the two thousand and nine water and sewer bonds. There's an option to call in September of two thousand nineteen, that's yet to be determined. And that Jason and Mike and I will be discussing that and getting with you all as to whether that's something we want to do later on. And the last one is the fall in outstanding debt for the last ten years. It started out at a hundred and twenty-eight point eight million in two thousand and eight, and it's dropped down to forty-three point nine million at the end of September two thousand seventeen.
That, that's the slide I like to see, Jeff.
Yep, and in the PAFER, I'll show you the one where it has the debt per capita, and it's the same thing. It's good. Some updates, we're continuing our tourist tax audits. They have produced great results, as you can have seen. We're aggressively going after increasing that area. An update on our transition to Laserfish. All the Board's minutes back to nineteen twenty-five, when the county was first established, are now on Laserfish. Official documents from two thousand and three, ordinances from nineteen seventy, and resolutions from nineteen ninety-six. They're all on Laserfish, there's a link on the county's website that the general public can go to to access the documents they want to receive. This is an ongoing project, we will continue to migrate all the official records over to Laserfish, which makes it a lot easier for the public to search. The county has received the certificate of excellence in financial reporting for thirty-four straight years. We anticipate that this CAFER that I just presented will be awarded the same award. And the Clerk's office has received the two awards for the PAFER. This is the third year for that, I'll go with that in a minute. And we anticipate we will receive the award for that as well. Lastly, I'd like to give thanks to my staff. Without them, I, you know, wouldn't do this job the way it does. And I'd like to thank Alyssa Nagy, who's running the slideshow over there, she's my Finance Director. She does a great job for me. And also I have my, with here with me, my Senior Accountant Rayanne Combe, my Staff Accountant Michelle King, and my internal auditor slash Treasury Manager Ed Halsey with me here. Without them, we couldn't do this job. And I also want to thank Jason and Mike and his staff, because we work well together. I, I, it bears repeating, because it really is something that I am proud of, that we have such a great relationship with your office and your staff. That's not the case in a lot of counties in this state, and I'm proud of that. And, you know, I say that every time I'm up here, but it's worth noting that, because it's very important. And without this, the help of your staff, this wouldn't be possible as well. So thank you, and questions?
Thank you Jeff. Questions of the Clerk?
Alright.
Good job.
Now the fun part.
Now the, now the good one.
Yeah, the good one. I have my future Human Resource Manager here, Laura MacGyver, who is the creator of this PAFER, I mean, she does all the layout, design, grab, gather some pictures, she does an excellent job with it, and so I want to thank her for that. You'll see a lot of the nice pictures in here. I want to skip to page four, where everybody's picture is in there, and the picture of the county. And it describes the Board of County Commissioners and the elected constitutional officers and how that works. The next page is a major initiatives page. Listed here are some of the major projects that we have undergoing and some that we have completed. The county Road five twelve resurfacing project is still ongoing. That's a three point five million dollar project. And it's a resurfacing project from, between Rosen Road and US Highway one. And it's funded by several grants and some gas taxes. The Osprey, this is a good one, the Osprey Acres Flowway, which is another project to improve the lagoon. It's eighty-three point one four acres of land between the South County Park and Oslo Middle School on Fifth Street Southwest. And it's a seven point five million dollar project to remove nutrients from the canals for the water going to the lagoon. That's an ongoing project funded by some different grants and the optional one-cent sales tax. The North County Commercial Septic-to-Sewer Program is ongoing. That's a three million dollar project that will construct gravity sewer to prevent the septic tanks from leaking into the lagoon. This is a project that has thirty-eight existing structures with a total of sixty-one parcels. The, you, Indian River County Utilities Department is constructing a new gravity sanitary sewer system. This is funded in part by St. John's River Water Management District Cost Sharing Agreement. And the, the next project is the South County Water Treatment Plant, well renovation and construction. The current, the Department of Utility Services currently owns and operates six Floridian water supply wells that are sourced for the South County RO plant. This project is constructing one new well, replacement of one well, and the rehabilitation of the, of three wells at a cost of two point five million dollars, all coming out of the Utilities Operating Fund. And ongoing also is a conversion from the eight hundred megahertz radio system to the new federal P-25 program, which is the state-of-the-art recommended program for public safety. This is a five point nine million dollar project, and will be funded from the one-cent sales tax. Some of the projects that were finished in two thousand seventeen was the GoLine bus transfer on Seventeenth Street, or Sixteenth Street there, right there at the railroad tracks. And there's a picture of that in here. And the Sheriff's helicopter hangar and helipad out at the Sheriff's Office. That's a nice facility that was completed during the year, there's also pictures of those in here. And the Sebastian Corners Retail Center, which was purchased at a cost of two point seven million dollars to relocate the North County offices out of the rented facilities that we currently rent. And that will be housing the compter, the clerk, the tax collector, the Veterans Association, the Utilities Department. Next page is a little information on the local economy. You'll see that there's the top principal employers in the county, beginning with the School District of two thousand seventy-three employees. The total employed in the county is sixty thousand nine twenty-one, which represents the unemployment rate decreasing from six point seven percent down to four point six percent at the end of two thousand seventeen. And then, per capita income has risen a little bit. In two thousand fifteen, we don't have the two thousand seventeen numbers yet, because it still takes time for the Bureau of Labor Statistics to get those numbers out. But from fifteen to sixteen, it raised almost five hundred dollars a year per person. The property taxes, the principal property taxpayers, FPNL leads the way there with a hundred and forty million dollars of assessed property. The total value of the county is over sixteen billion dollars worth of taxable value.
Chairman, can I ask Jeff under? One question, under FPNL, does anybody have any estimated numbers of the, when the sale of Vero Beach Electric goes through, those assets become taxable? What is the estimated new taxable? It should be a sizable number.
Increase, yeah. Those, because the assets that they're purchasing currently owned by the City of Vero Beach. Now, some of that will be dismantled, and
Right.
To answer your question, I don't know the exact number yet. We will search and try to find that answer for you. But it certainly should be a significant increase in taxable value once the property is transferred from a non-taxable entity to a taxable entity like FPNL.
Great, thank you.
Down below, the, there's a breakdown of the dollar bill based on the tax millage rate. And you can see there that the school board is fifty percent of every dollar that is taxed goes to the school board. The Indian River County has twenty-three percent of it, EMS has fifteen percent, and special districts like the Solid Waste Disposal District has ten percent. This graphic here does not include taxing districts like the Sebastian River taxing district. Those are only districts that are taxed to a certain group of people, so we exclude that from this presentation. The next page is a government-wide financial statement. We just went over that a minute ago, the statement of net position and the statement of activities. But the thing about this is I love that picture there of the fireworks from boats sitting in the, in the river watching the fireworks on July fourth. I used to do that myself, by the way, so that is a great picture. And we have thanked the providers of the pictures and given them a copy of the PAFER as their contribution, and they do this free of charge. The government funds, page, page twelve, shows you the sources of revenues for the government funds and the percentages. The pie chart shows you there that the property taxes is forty-eight point two percent of the total governmental revenues. And there's, again, the And there's, again, as I mentioned before, the picture of the new completed Go Line Bus Transfer Station. And it breaks down all the other sources of revenues. On the expenditure side, public safety leads the way with forty-six percent of the governmental expenditures, as we would suspect. And it breaks down the rest of it from there. Page fourteen shows the general fund in particular of the county. This is the chief operating fund of the county. The ending fund balance was forty-seven point four million dollars. And it, it breaks down the fund balance by four categories. Non-spendable is kind, is assets or, or fund balance of things that are not spendable, like inventory, prepaid items, that kind of stuff that's not in spendable form. Restricted is, the one point two million is specifically restricted for a particular Committed is that amounts that can be spent only by approval by the county ordinance. And unassigned is general unassigned net position and of the fund balance of the general fund. And you'll see there that we're at forty-three point three million dollars of uncommitted, undesigned fund balance. The next page is capital assets on page sixteen. And here's where the Sheriff's Helicopter Pad and warehouse is. And that's a, a completed project. And you'll see here, capital assets, buildings and improvements lead the way in that, our total capital assets are seven hundred and eighty-seven million dollars as of September thirtieth. And the pie chart breaks it down between buildings and improvements, land, infrastructure, and other minor items. The debt, as we just went over, is, is decreasing as well. And in two thousand eight, it was nine hundred and ten dollars per capita. It's now down to two hundred and ninety-five dollars per capita. That's a great comment on the financial management of the county.
And Jeff, if I could jump in there, I just, I pulled up the national debt clock. I think everybody knows about the national debt clock. And so, the county's debt per capita is two hundred and ninety-five dollars. The national debt per capita is sixty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. There's also a Florida debt clock, which is six thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. So, your sixty-four thousand national debt per capita, or per citizen, they call it. Florida debt is almost seven thousand per citizen, and Indian River County's is a little under three hundred dollars per person. So, I think that puts it in perspective. Also, it's another argument of mine, that the government that governs closest to the people governs best, because we, they, people a lot less, we, we've borrowed a lot less on behalf of the people than, than either the state or the federal government. So, just wanted to add that in.
Amen to that. I echo those comments, because, and you can see that, that combined with the unassigned general fund balance of forty-four million dollars, we are a healthy, financially healthy, strong county. And I know Dylan is going to go up to Washington tomorrow and testify, and he's taking one of these with us, with him. And we're going to be proud to have him testify that we are a financially strong and accountable county and thoroughly well-run. Page eighteen is cash and investments. We are, as I've told you before, we are structured very well to take advantage of the increasing rates that are going to be occurring. We have thirty-six percent of our three hundred and fifty-seven million dollar portfolio was in U.S. Treasuries, U.S. Agencies, I mean. And cash was thirty-five point five percent, and the rest were in U.S. Agencies and other marketable interest investments. And you can see that the investment balances have increased from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen by almost seventeen and a half million dollars. And lastly, I'm proud of this picture here on the page twenty, twenty-one of the Tower Walk, the American flags. This is a Tunnel to Towers Walk for the EMS. This was a great program that was installed after nine eleven for the firefighter that walked across the bridge. And this is a good memorial for that, and the picture is excellent. So, we thought we'd add that in there as well. Any questions?
Jeff, no questions. Just like to request if you could drop a case of these off at my office, because when I speak to different groups, I, I think this is a great thing to hand out to folks. And, and I tell everybody, this Realtors and other business people and everybody, that having a very strong financial, financially stable local government, I think is a big factor for businesses looking to relocate here, or even people looking to move here, that they want to know that, you know, the government isn't going to go bankrupt on them, or a huge tax increase. And this is so easy to show people how strong a position that the local county is. And I think it's a huge selling point for the county. And, you know, as, as Jason mentioned, it just shows that, you know, a, a, at least in our case, local government's doing a very good job with, with taxpayers' dollars. And this, this document just makes it really easy to explain that and show it. So, I'd love to, if you could drop a case off, and I'll, I'll be giving them out as I, as I get around. So, but thank you very much, yeah.
You're welcome.
Great. Commissioner Zork?
Yes, also, is there a clearinghouse where it would have all the counties listed their, their county debt, their per capita debt? It'd just be interesting to see, how do we?
Yeah, there's.
Stack up with our neighbors and, and other comparables?
The Auditor General's Office of the State of Florida has a website that, that all that's reported on.
Is it?
So, you could go to there and find that kind of information.
Anyone else? No? Jeff, thank you very much, and to your staff and everybody, thank you for all your hard work and for keeping watch over our, how we spend the tax dollars. We appreciate your, your watchdog efforts.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Jeff. And Jeff, we don't need any action, right? Do we need to accept your report?
No, this is.
Okay.
You, you, under the consent agenda, you approved the annual financial, the AFR that goes to the state.
Okay.
So, by that, you've approved everything.
Very good. That now takes us into public items. There's no public hearings. There's no public discussion. We do have one public notice items. Dylan, would you do the honors, please, of reading the public notice?
Thank you very much. We have a notice of a scheduled public hearing for May first, two thousand eighteen. This is for HF Properties LLC's request to rezone plus or minus eleven point nine six acres from CL Limited Commercial District to CG General Commercial District. Subject property is located south of Seventy-third Street, north of Seventy-first Street, west of U.S. Highway One, and east of Old Dixie Highway. This will be quasi-judicial in nature. And again, this is going to be a rezoning hearing scheduled for May first, two thousand eighteen. With that, I turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Dylan. We move to departmental matters. There, there's no county administrative matter, so on to departmental matters. Under Human Resources, approval for Benefit Administration System to support comprehensive employee benefit program. And welcome up Suzanne Boyle, our Human Resources Director. Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Good, so far.
Great. Everybody, I'm sure, read through the agenda item, and I'll just provide a brief overview. I've been with Indian River County almost two years, and during that time, I've been looking into how we do what we do in our human resources. And our benefits program is quite an excellent benefits program. We have a great comprehensive medical program. We have a lot of voluntary benefits. But the way in which we administer it is very cumbersome, very clunky, very difficult, very confusing for our employees. We actually, the Board of County Commissioners, as well as all the constitutional offices, share the same medical plan. And we, we process enrollments and updates and changes via paper. And we hand key information into websites, and we enter data into about five or six different databases, the same information over and over again. And what we found is, we're, we have errors that happen as a result of this. And my proposal before you is to transition to a benefit administration platform, which will improve our data integrity. It'll provide a streamlined process for our new employees. They'll actually be able to enroll from their homes. They'll be able to discuss their enrollment choices with their spouses. They'll be able to watch informational videos, do everything online. And, and I'm quite excited about the improvement that this type of system will, will bring to us. In addition to that, we'll be able to generate data files to our carriers to make it an error-free transmission of data. Most recently, I had a situation where an employee who'd been with us for six months called Human Resources and said they went down to get their prescription filled, and they were rejected. And we found out that the piece of paper that we fax over to the insurance carrier, when they keyed it in on their end, they made a data enter, entry error. And so, this member had to pay cash for their prescription and then go through a claims process. Those are the types of things that, that I'm wanting to avoid by implementing this type of a system.
Okay. Questions, commissioners? Okay. So, we have a recommendation, recommendation from staff to move forward with the program? And you've gone through the selection process, and it's Benefit Express.
Yes.
It's who you're recommending we go with. Okay. Commissioners?
Will be approved.
I'll be glad to second a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fleischer, second from Commissioner Zork.
Sorry about that.
Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to speak to the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries four to zero. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you very much.
You know, Mr. Chairman, without Bob here, it's, you know.
Yeah, I'm going to have to pound the gavel more to keep, get you all motivated and moving.
Pick it up.
Next is under the Office of Management and Budget, the Property Casualty Insurance for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Michael Simkowski is our budget director. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Michael Simkowski. I'm joined today by Beth Martin, the county's risk manager, and Erica Conick, who's with our insurance broker. I'm here today to present the insurance coverage renewals. They, the renewal will begin on May first, two thousand eighteen. I'll also tell you today that the property insurance market is, is very different than in recent years, due to impacts experienced from both hurricanes, Matthew and Irma. As Mr. Smith indicated, we had a, a five point six-plus million dollar claim reimbursement from Matthew, and the insurance adjusters are currently working through our Irma claim to determine the eligibility there as well. So, the, the market conditions have changed after a number of years in Florida with, with no hurricanes. On page one sixty-eight in the agenda item, there's a, a table that reflects a total premium renewal across all coverages of about one point eight five million dollars. This is an increase of two hundred and fifty-six thousand and three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So, overall, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. You can see, though, the, the various coverages are outlined, and then in the agenda item, they are followed by a, a discussion of each of the various coverages. But you can see, obviously, that the property line is an increase of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars of the two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar overall increase. So, the, the change is within the property coverage. That is an increase of twenty-four point zero three percent. The balance of coverages, as you see, are relatively small and have little to no increases. A number of them are relatively flat. Again, the total cost of the renewal is the one point eight five million dollars. The cost of property coverage, though, at the one-two-two-one-three-six-seven, which is in the table here, is back to costs that were experienced in the fiscal year fourteen and between the fiscal year fourteen and fifteen levels, but still well below the, at one point, we were paying almost two point four million dollars for premiums in FY oh seven and oh eight. So, while there is an increase reflective of the, the recent experiences throughout the state of Florida, i- it's certainly well below what it has been historically. Staff evaluated options to reduce the premiums by reducing either the all-other-perils limits, which includes tornadoes, floods, and the like, and named storm limits. But we felt the savings did not justify the reduction in coverage limits. And dur- during the peak years, when insurance premiums for property were about two point four million dollars, I know Mr. Brown admitted to having many nights of lost sleep, because coverage limits were reduced just out of necessity, just because the, the costs were so prohibitive during those years. But we have gone back to the two hundred million dollars in, in named, in limits purchased and named storm limit of fifty million dollars. The staff recommendation is the board approves the renewal, authorize staff to bind the coverage. Again, it would be in effect for one year, beginning on May first, two thousand eighteen. And we're also recommending that you approve the broker's annual fee of one hundred and seventy-five dollars, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
I like that first.
Yeah, the broker would get nervous if it was a hundred and seventy-five dollars. But, and I also want to point out that, that is a flat rate. There was no increase in the broker's fee. So, while, again, we have experienced some changes due to recent hurricane activity in Florida, it's still well below historical levels. And we feel comfortable where we're at relative to, our recommendation relative to coverage limits standing pat with where we're at.
Mike, do we get any discount on the, the, the building coverage, because we're putting the new roofs on buildings here? Does that factor in, or?
Broker.
Good morning.
That would help with the wind modeling, which is what they use to help price out the premium. So, I did note that these two buildings just got new roofs, and it sounds like maybe the Health Department building might be getting a new roof as well.
Building A is completed. They're working on building B and the Health Department building now.
Yeah, so next year, that will be taken into consideration.
Very good. Great, thank you. Hey, commissioners, any questions of staff?
Mr. Chairman, move staff recommendation and approve the payment for service.
A hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, we have a motion from Commissioner Fleischer, second by Commissioner Zork. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four to zero. Thank you all for coming. Michael, thank you very much for a good job. Thank you. Moving on to public works, we have a Millstone Landing update from Mr. Spirica. Rich, good morning and welcome.
Good morning, commissioners. Rich Spirica, Public Works Director. Today I have good news.
Yay!
Seventeenth Street Southwest was opened yesterday, fully functional, signal, everything, crosswalks, everything's working just fine. So, minor issues with some asphalt. We're doing as-built drawings, but they've met all their criteria, all the stripings down, thermoplastic. Everything that the board directed to be done has been completed as of yesterday.
Very good. So, commissioners, at, at this point, we still have in effect the moratorium on issuing any building permits as per the developer's agreement. Rich, you're telling us that they have now met all the conditions of the developer's agreement related to that particular project.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Well, commissioners, I would recommend that, at this point, if staff concurs, that we would go ahead and lift the moratorium on issuance of building permits.
That's a motion. I will make that.
We have a motion from Commissioner Zork, second by Commissioner Fleischer. Commissioners, any discussion? And Jason, I take it you and Rich? And Jason, I take it you and Rich are good with the motion?
We're good with that. Seventeenth Street is good to go. We're good with issuing the building permits going forward.
Okay. Very good. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none. Commissioners, I would just like to publicly say once again, this was a very difficult decision we had to make back in January and I'm very proud of how the board stuck together and we stuck to our guns and we made sure that we enforced our developer's agreement. I think it was critical that we stand strong on this, but I am very pleased with the board on sticking with this. I know we all heard from some homeowners that were having issues and that was a very difficult part of this, but I think in the long run, the county is in much better shape that we sent a very strong, clear message that we are going to stand by these developer agreements and not cave in. So, I just want to thank the board for your support on this. So, motion by Commissioner Zork, second by Commissioner Fleischer. No, I have it, Commissioner Zork.
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion by Commissioner Zork, second by Commissioner Fleischer, to lift the moratorium on the issuance of building permits at Millstone Landing. All in favor of the motion signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four zero. Jason?
I just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just do want to mention quickly, 23rd Street, there is a deadline there, I think of July 1st to get that done. We're hopeful that they will have that completed so that we're not back in the same boat again there come July. So, just...
And Rich, I believe you are in discussions with Starwood to make sure they keep moving on 23rd.
Yes, sir. I talked to the contractor yesterday. They anticipate being done middle June with July being the push date. They haven't, they've got it staked, so they're moving forward. Anticipated that if they hit it, like they're telling me they will, they'll be, they'll meet the deadline without a problem.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Rich, and thank you for all your efforts in tracking this and monitoring it and reporting back to us. We appreciate you taking the time.
Not a problem.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes departmental matters, moving to county attorney matters, all aboard Florida Army Corps of Engineers Record of Decision. Mr. Reinhold.
Thank you very much to the Chair. On December 19th, 2017, the Board of County Commissioners had authorized the county attorney's office to file a lawsuit against the FRA concerning the issuance of their Record of Decision. On February 13th, 2018, Indian River County, in conjunction with Martin County and Kara Fowl, had filed the suit against the United States Department of Transportation and the FRA challenging the Record of Decision. Won for the issue of its inadequacy of the, or had filed suit against the US DOT and FRA for, one, the inadequacy of the Record of Decision and the NEPA process, but also with regards to the illegality of the private activity bonds. On March 23rd, 2018, the United States Army Corps of Engineers issued its rod as it pertained to the permits that the Army Corps is issuing for the all-board Florida project. That rod relies heavily on the FRA Record of Decision. Thus, after consulting with our outside counsel, county attorney's office thought it was best and recommends that the board file suit with regards to challenging the Army Corps Record of Decision. As the issues in the current suit and the issues in the Record of Decision with regards to the Army Corps are very similar, we do not anticipate a dramatic increase in costs simply to add in this additional relief, either through an amended complaint or through a separate lawsuit being filed. With that, our recommendation is to file the challenge of the Record of Decision issued by the Army Corps of Engineers and I turn it back over to the board for questions.
Thank you. Dylan, Commissioners, any questions of staff? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation to authorize the filing of the complaint.
Move staff recommendation.
We have a motion from Commissioner Zork, second by Commissioner Fleischer. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Mr. Johnson? Good morning, Bob.
Good morning. I have one question. Do we have a representative in Washington DC that look after our interest in this lawsuit?
Yes, we do. Dylan, you want to...
Actually, we've got outside counsel. Brian Cave is the law firm. They're actually based out of New York, although they have local counsel in Washington DC and they are assisting us in the litigation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public that wishes to comment on the motion before us? Seeing none, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dylan. We have no Commissioner matters. That brings us to special districts and boards, the Solid Waste Disposal District and our quarterly recycling update. We have our crack recycling staff here. Good morning.
Good morning and thank you. It is April, it is time for our second quarterly recycling update for fiscal year 1718. So, looking at our recycling tonnages in 1718, they are slightly higher than they were last year. Our average tonnage was about 1,895 for fiscal year 201718, about 1,846 last year, which are both higher than 1516 when we first started single stream. So, we are still seeing an increase. This was the same trend we saw in the first quarter, so cumulatively, our recycling tonnage are still going up with single stream recycling, which is absolutely what we want to see. At our last quarterly recycling update, the SWID board requested that we try to connect these numbers to look at, there's a lot of development in Indian River County and an increasing population, so trying to connect these numbers to see if our increase in tonnages has to do with the fact that there are more people here or if it's actually that people are recycling more. So, we did try to do that. This chart shows calendar years. Each calendar year, we get a population estimate from DEP, so that's the numbers that we used. So, it has increased from 2015 up to 2017. And just for completion's sake, I also wrote down the number of households. This is single and multifamily. That has also increased from 2015 up to now, 2017, or last year, 2017. And our tonnages, our single stream cycling tonnages in 2015, they were at 13,000. Now, we are over 20,000, so that's really exciting to see. And essentially, what we did, we looked at the population, we looked at the single stream recycling tonnages, and we came up with a pounds per person per day. So, in 2015, that number is about .51. That increased to .73 pounds per person per day in 2016 and then another slight increase to .75 pounds per person in 2017 per day. So, what we are seeing is there is probably an increase in recycling because we have more people in Indian River County, but we're also seeing that a single individual is actually recycling slightly more as we continue on through our single stream recycling program. So, again, that's exciting. We like to see that. And also, that confirms what we hear from the public on a daily basis, that they're recycling more and more folks are indeed recycling when they haven't before. So, all that's really positive. We love hearing that. Another question that was put forth from the SWID board was looking for a relationship between the implementation of single stream recycling and what's happening over at our customer convenience centers. So, in this graph, the blue line with the triangles, that's our single stream recycling materials. So, essentially, before we started the program, this would include mixed recyclables, newspaper and cardboard. After the single stream program started, this would be the single stream material as well as cardboard. So, we took a look at those and those numbers. In fiscal year 1314 and 1415, we had a little over 1,000 tons of recycling that was brought to the convenience centers. When we switched over to the single stream program in 201516, that number dropped to about 700 and in 1617, it dropped even more a little bit to about 600 tons. So, once we did start this program, we did see a decrease in the amount of single stream materials that we collected at the convenience centers. This probably has something to do with the convenience in, of having a cart delivered to their home. So, we really think that folks are recycling more at their house. We also wanted to take a look at the garbage to see what was happening there. And in 1314 and 1415, the garbage was over on the right-hand side there, a little over 17,600 around there. And it dropped quite a bit in 1516 with the beginning of the program and then the numbers rebounded, they shot back up. What we think happened in 1617 was we had both Hurricane Irma and Hurricane Matthew happen within that fiscal year. So, just looking at the, this is a picture of Roseland Convenience Center just before Hurricane Irma hit. So, a lot of folks were cleaning out their, cleaning out their material, trying to prepare for these hurricanes and after the hurricanes as well, they had a lot of garbage. Now, this graph just shows garbage, it does not show yard waste, so this is a product of people trying to get rid of their material before those hurricanes hit. So, to really see if single stream recycling has had an impact on the garbage at the convenience centers, we'll need to have another year without a very active hurricane season to really see how single stream recycling and the new curbside garbage program has affected those convenience centers. Another question that was put forth from the board, and we're all very interested in, is an update on our recycling rate for 2017. Just in April, we submitted all of our data, so this includes all the recycling that's going on at SWID and through the county and the public sector, and also it includes C&amp;D companies and all the recycling that's going on in the private sector. So, looking at all of those numbers, the annual Indian River County recycling rate for 2017, we estimate is about 60 percent, right at 60 percent. The Florida intermediate recycling goal, or the interim recycling goal for 2017 is 60 percent. So, if DEP looks at our data, confirms our data and verifies it, we will have reached that goal for 2017, which is, again, really exciting for us here in Indian River County. So, they will officially post those numbers in, I believe it's the end of June. So, by our next quarterly recycling update, we should be able to give you the official estimate. So, we are really excited about getting close to that recycling goal, but that means we're still developing programs and trying to increase our recycling as much as we can. So, we do have recycling at the eight county beach parks. So, recycling is available all the way from Amper Sands all the way down to Round Island on both the ocean side and the riverside. So, we do have recycling actively going on there and people are using it and very happy about it. Love to hear that. And as promised, I am going to give you a little bit more of an update on the Indian River County School Recycling Pilot Program. In the first quarterly update, I told you the launch happened. It went very, very well, a lot of positive response. So, we did some follow-ups afterwards. I gave the students and the teachers and the custodial staff some surveys, basically to see how the program was going. So, I administered those surveys about a month after the program started. Overall, the responses from the teachers and the students and the custodial staff was very positive. Over 95 percent of them said that they would basically recommend putting this at the other schools. A lot of positive response from the students. Green teams were developed at the school, so that was really great. With any pilot program, there were a couple of challenges. One that we highly expected and was a challenge was in the cafeteria. We had a area where they could dispose of liquids, basically dump out their liquids and then they could recycle that container. So, that does take a little bit more time. It takes a little bit more getting used to for the students. So, any of the, any of the comments that were a little bit more, were not entirely positive, were usually about the disposal of liquids and how that took a little bit longer. We think that's something that will get better as they get more used to it and as time goes on. So, that disposal of liquids is one for the students, so they can recycle those containers even if there's some liquids left over. And it's also for the custodial staff to make the garbage containers cleaner and lighter. That's the whole point of the disposal of liquids. So, that has been going actually better than I expected, which is great, but that's where some of the comments were and some of the challenges. Another challenge was some of the outdoor containers had a little bit more contamination than the indoor containers, partially because, especially in the dining areas, this is because it wasn't monitored quite as much. There was nobody out there to really help the students navigate. And also, when parents came to visit students, they would usually sit outside with their kids. So, I think educating the kids more and getting them to be, again, ambassadors, they'll help their parents to recycle more and we'll try to get some more labels out there to kind of help them navigate without any guidance. So, overall, really positive and those challenges were some things that we expected. The big question was, did it actually increase recycling and decrease garbage? The answer is yes. Recycling at all four schools increased by about 50 percent, which is really, really great. And the garbage, depending on the school, decreased about 30 to 50 percent. So, we are seeing that increase in recycling and we are seeing that reduction in their garbage. So, very, very positive. Education-wise, we gave them some surveys at the beginning to see what items were mostly confusing to the kids and then we developed a educational poster for them. So, we found that the problem items from the pre-program surveys were plastic utensils and plastic straws. They had a lot of questions about that. So, we tried to focus on that when we were teaching them that first week. So, they do seem to be doing a little bit better with that, but they still need some reminders. We also let the kids develop the posters in the cafeterias. So, on the right-hand side there, those are some of the posters that the students at Storm Grove made for their recycling containers. Again, to get them excited and to get them involved and to kind of start developing those environmental clubs. Another thing that I wanted to point out that I thought was great, at Rosewood Magnet, the cafeteria staff actually developed a recycling game for the students. So, they'd hold up an item and ask the children if it was recyclable or not, and that was a great way to kind of get them engaged and get them thinking about it while they're in the cafeteria. So, if we do expand this program, I'd love to see that little game make its way into some of the other schools. So, we have met with the superintendent of the school district and we have kind of talked about some of these results and we're in discussions about perhaps how we can expand this, so I'm sure at a later date, you will see us again. We'll come back and talk a little bit more about that. And lastly, I know for the, for the schools, at the beginning of the program, Pelican Island was working on a composting program. It was not up and running when we started the program. It is up and running now. They have two large composters in the back of their building and they have switched over to the biodegradable trays. So, that program is up and running. They're composting their food, they're composting their trays and that's going very, very well. So, if you want to go visit them and check out how that's, how that's working, I'm sure they would love that. So, those are the schools. In terms of events and education that we've been doing these past three months, we hosted the Electronics and Household Hazardous Waste Event in the winter. We had about 275 cars, which is a slight increase from last winter, and we had about 10,100 pounds of electronics. Last year, we had about 8,000, so we're still increasing our recycling there. And then, just a quick shout-out to, congratulations to Mr. Steve Marty who received the laptop. He was our raffle winner for the laptop and was very excited about that. And the other thing that we had been working on that came out very recently was a recycling mailer. We basically created this educational mailer and we sent it to all single-family and all multifamily homes in Indian River County. And connected with that was an online survey. Folks could go onto our website, there's a survey on there. You can enter into a raffle for a $100 gift card to Target or a $25 gift card to Countryside Citrus. We'll do those drawings in about June. So, folks can go on there and tell us a little bit of what they thought about the garbage and recycling program. It's very short, it's less than 15 questions long and you could also have an opportunity to kind of share your thoughts. And so far, as of yesterday, we had about 700 surveys submitted, so we're excited to get some feedback from the community. And then, lastly, I just wanted to mention, this weekend, there is going to be a special event closure for Gifford Customer Convenience Center, just in association with the Vera Beach Air Show. There's a no-fly zone, no-activity zone. So, Thursday through Sunday, the convenience centers will be open in the morning until noon and then afternoon, they're going to be closed, just for safety reasons. Mm-hmm?
Just Gifford.
Just Gifford. Thank you very much. So, this is just Gifford because it's close to the air show. So, that was my last little note. If you have any questions, please feel free.
Stephanie, y'all just also did the paper shredding event that I heard was very successful, correct?
Yes, yes. We just completed that on, not last weekend, the weekend before. Last weekend was Steam Fest. So, that went very well and very smoothly. We're still waiting to see how much paper we shredded, but we had about 540 cars come through. So, a little bit less than last year, but probably because it was after Easter and a lot of the folks had headed back up north. But it went very well.
And then, I heard you had good attendance at Steam Fest as well, right?
Yes.
A few people came through that.
Oh, there were so many kids. My clicker finger started to hurt after a while. But we probably got over 100 kids coming through there. We, Alexis Peralta and I, she did the stormwater part of it and I did the recycling part of it. And just so many kids coming through, we gave them a little demonstration about how recycling works and then I played a little game of how long does trash last to tell them how long things stay around in our landfill. So, that, both the parents and the kids found that very interesting.
Very good. Well, keep up the great work. Any questions, Commissioners or...
A couple. On your discussions with the superintendent, as they move forward, I know they redid the kitchen and dining area in Felsmere and Beechland, but it would be probably, if they're going to roll this out long-term, when they are going to be redesigning a facility or rebuilding it, dealing with those liquids is cumbersome, where if there was a way of having a drop sink connection or something in the reci, you know, like a recycling pocket inside the cafeteria room would probably make it function better with the staff side where you're not having to... to pour them into one container, then take the five-gallon bucket and pour it into another container. You know, the more you handle it, the more problematic that gets. So, I don't know if anybody in the design community has come up with cafeteria recycling center ideas or concept, but that may be something worth throwing out. I don't think they have anything on the horizon, but at some point, they're going to be redoing more of the cafeteria kitchen spaces, and that would be a nice component to build in from the beginning.
Yes, actually, when I was, when we were applying for the grant, the Carton Council had talked about some other schools in some other counties that has done exactly that, they have a connection where they basically just dump it into a little container, it goes directly into the sink. So I have mentioned that, when I do talk to the schools, I do mention that. If there's any way to do it, I told them that that might be something to look at in the future. So I think as they, as this moves forward, that that might be something some of the schools look into and hopefully try to adopt. Makes it a lot easier, you're absolutely right.
Sure, and two other items, and this may be more of a, of any question. When they're doing some of the large land clearing projects, and they're bringing in onsite chippers, and then that material is going to a third-party user for some application, I don't know how, or even if we capture any of that tonnage, but it's, I'm sure it's, you know, if you're clearing 40 acres, it's hundreds and hundreds of tons of material that's getting chipped onsite, and I don't know how we can capture that either, possibly as a questionnaire on the land development permit, do you plan to chip onsite? We'd have to get some type of tracking tonnage, or, you know, I'm sure the guys that do that, they can go look at that site, and they go, that's what it is, but that's not scientific enough for our reporting, we need something, you know, X truck loads and average truck weighs X, so that's something that we may could look at incorporating as a questionnaire on the land development permit side. And then lastly, and I see Rich had left the room, but I didn't know if we had added into our, when we award contracts for road milling projects, if we now require the vendor to report the milled tonnage or cubic yards, or some trackable number so that we're capturing, I know we did 512, and I know we captured that, and then 58th Avenue is the next one up, but the more of this information we can get kind of flowing in in a automatic process would be helpful. And lastly, when I had a meeting with some of the CND operators, my plan was to have maybe a secondary meeting with the folks that do the actual demolition work. Some of the material, depending on who the contractor is, goes to Fort Pierce, I don't think we, we don't know what those tonnages are, but maybe reaching out to them when they're doing demolition permit applications, you know, of the right scale, we're not talking about somebody that's remodeling their kitchen or their garage, we don't want that, but if somebody's tearing down entire structures, some way to try to capture that tonnage if it's not going to Jenkins or Fisher or one of the other people that have the rock-crushing and concrete-crushing machines. I think when it goes to Fort Pierce, we don't have a clue of what left the county and where it went. I know some guys, some of the Palm Beach operators that come up do truck it back down to Fort Pierce because of, there's no disposal fee, and they'll take it with the steel because they'll pull the steel out of the crushed concrete that's in the truck, so the more of that we can capture through not being too cumbersome on the permitting side, but it's tonnage that's going somewhere, and the more we can capture is going to help us continue to boost our numbers.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners? Stephanie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to the next report. Yeah, Mr. Johnson?
I'd just like to say that I belong to an organization where we had Stephanie as the guest speaker, and she did an excellent job of presenting her presentation and so forth. She used to be complimented on that, I think, on the activities that she goes out, and I think anybody belongs to organizations, she's available to, as a guest speaker too, so I think, I don't think she made that presentation. And next, the... My wife and I participated in that paper drive.
Yes.
And it was very well organized, and they did a great job on that, too. I don't know how, what comparison to last year they did. And lastly, the chipping, there was an article in the Press Journal about the chipping of one of these sites, they had, and they made it sound like they just arbitrarily came along and moved those homeless people out of the site. It was, the way they reported it was reported like they didn't notify the homeless people that they had behind Walmart, and hopefully they were, those homeless people were given some advance notice, and they just didn't all of a sudden take the bulldozers in the morning and bulldoze that whole camp down that they had back there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Commissioners, that concludes the agenda. Does anybody have anything for the public good? Seeing none, we stand adjourned.